Good evening, I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman. Roll call, Ms. Goman.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goman. Item number three, announcements. We are certainly pleased that a lot of our activities is going on and we have graduates this year that are either the children of our employees or spouse. And I want to recognize those graduates right now. Ms. Cynthia Lee, the wife of Captain Terry Lee. We have a certificate of our appreciation and I'm gonna step down and join you. On behalf of the City of Bastrop, the council members in this office, I wish to congratulate your wife on her accomplishment graduating from college. She is also the daughter of Mr. Willie McKeon, Director of Public Works. Congratulations. Ashley Bonet Lenore, the daughter of Ms. Evelyn Lenore, an employee of our Parks and Recreation. We're certainly proud of Ashley's accomplishments and if you will give her this handshake for me.
Oh, we are.
Thank you. Her grandmother is here with us. Would you stand up? Thank you so much for joining us. She's one of the ones that watched me grow up in my roots. Ash Angel Chafford, she's the daughter of our city marshal. We will get this to Ms. Chafford. Mr. McKee? Okay, help me with this, Ms. Lynch, the pronunciation.
Kenesha.
Kenesha, would you come? She's the daughter of our patrol officer, Kiki Lynch. We're proud of you and your accomplishment as a graduate of Bastrop High School. We implemented a wellness program and it has gained national momentum with First Lady Michelle Obama on wellness for our children and we piloted this program at H.V. Adams School. And we have some winners that we will be sending the letters to Washington, D.C. We have the principal of H.V. Adams, Ms. Taylor. Would you join me, please? The students participated in almost a month-long project. They walked and I have to admit, I fell by the wayside in my walking because I couldn't always get away from work in time. But we're proud of the children, the letters that they wrote and then they have talked about their experiences. And I'm gonna pass these certificates to you, Ms. Taylor, and if you would call their names out. Some of them are here, some of them are not, but...
If they're not here, do you want to just hold them?
Would you hold them and just present them to the students?
Okay.
Go ahead and call their names so that that name...
Fajah Bonet. One present. Lakisha Fields.
You come to them.
Okay. You want to present it? Okay, this is for Lakisha Fields.
We're proud of you. Give your handshake.
Lakisha.
Thank you for participating.
Jasmine Frazier. Congratulations.
Thank you for participating.
Zakiya Holmes. Congratulations.
Thank you for participating.
Roger Adams, not present. Kwani Shapiri. Tajia Tillman. Charisma Robinson. Congratulations, Charisma.
Thank you.
Jakara Allen. Jakara Campbell. Deanna Hall. Congratulations, Jen.
She wants to...
Jerry L. Hampton. Christopher Vines. Calicia Johnson. Nadia McGee. Alexis Brown. Brandy Carr. Kirsten Angel Cotton. Atiya Ford. Courtland Harris. Ladeldrick Allen. Dylan Johnson. Javonte Jones. Lucian McHenry. Shatoya McHenry. America Alford. Akila A. Vance. Kyler Bailey. Diamond Coleman. Creneshia Johnson. Kalen Johnson. Kaysha Scott. Canteria Addison. Jalencia Campbell. Kiara Jackson. Chantelisse O. Windsor. Raven Radcliffe. Leondra Wilson. Malisha House. Kiara Thomas. Tiana Ammons. Larry Hawkins. Reggie Johnson. Tamisha Jones. Dardarius Miles. And all of these students completed the challenge. And again, we want to thank Mayor Olive and the City of Bastrop for allowing our school to participate in this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff with you? Do you have someone with you?
I have Mrs. Jane, sixth grade teacher at H.V. Adams. And I have several parents that are here tonight, so I want to thank them for coming out.
Thank you for joining us. If you would like to be excused at this time, I'll pause for just a minute for our guest if you, as we continue on with city business. What we do for our children will long be remembered years to come and it always gives me pleasure to recognize the children for their efforts. We've had several celebrations this week. This week is Police Week for Northeast Louisiana and I urge you to acknowledge your support to our officers for the work that they do. This is Older Citizens Week with the nursing homes. I've made my rounds to all the nursing homes and I urge you to visit someone you know to let them know we appreciate their contribution to society. Also, this is Nurses Week, so express your gratitude to the nurses. We won the cleanest district, District Five, Category G. I want to thank Mr. McKee and all the hard work for the cleanup. We also want to compliment the cleanest city winner, which was Denham Springs. We placed number three, but I still feel very proud of all of the work that was done towards this effort. There were five cities in the category, so we were in the middle, so we know we're gonna go towards number one instead of down towards number five. Denise Houston will be returning. She's with the USDA Department. She has been assisting us with housing needs for individuals who fit into the criteria. The Census, they will be doing the door-to-door campaign. Please make sure everyone that you know is counted. It is so important to our community. We're working on our fire rating. That's coming up. That has been a priority with Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Montgomery, did you want to make any comments that we are prepared? I know this is impromptu. I had it in my notes of announcements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Yes, this fire rating is something that the City of Bastrop goes through every five years. Last time, I guess goes without saying, was in 2005. And as of June 29th of this year, we'll be going through the rating again. It's a process that we're familiar with. We're confident that we're gonna do well at it and if there's any assistance I need from any of you all, I will be contacting you at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Montgomery.
All right.
Public Works, you're gonna hear from Mr. McKee a little later, but under announcement, Mr. McKee, do you have anything you want to say in terms of your congratulations to all of your division and the hard work that they did for the cleanup?
I'll make this short, Mayor, Council. The Public Works, along with the citizens, in my opinion, did a great job. Honestly, I think the city looked better than it did the year we won first place. So I believe Denham Springs, they must have let them win because it was the first time they entered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKee. On the day that they gave me this plaque, Mr. McKee had to take a call to address some Public Works needs, so he didn't get a chance to stand in and receive the plaque, but I accepted it on behalf of all the hard work that everyone joined together in doing. The recovery plan, we had our official meeting with the council about three weeks ago and I want you to know that the copies have gone out to the governor and all parties that are in need of having a copy. We will be working on our first meeting to see where we stand in terms of progress for our recovery. That concludes my announcements. Are there any announcements from the floor or from the council members? Item number four. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes for March 23rd.
May I make a motion that we approve the meeting, the minutes of our last meeting that was held on the floor?
I second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting April the 8th, 2010, regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me? Was that an "I"?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries. And April 15th, special call meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 101329, Bills and Claims for the month of April 2010.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 101329.
Properly moved?
Second.
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 101330A, Resolution Designating Approximately Fifteen Acres of Land in Bastrop as an Economic Development Area and as an area for which the plans for development are consistent with development plans. Mr. Perry, did you want to address, just briefly speak to the public?
Mayor and Council, I appreciate y'all hearing my resolution and I hope this is something that comes to fruition. It's something I've worked at and I think it'll be a betterment for the city. I think it'll be a big plus for the city as far as housing. As I said in the past meeting, I'll keep you posted on the progress. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Steve Perry, Resolution 101330A, Resolution Designating Approximately Fifteen Acres of Land in Bastrop as an Economic Development Area and as an area for which the plans for development are consistent with development plans. Mr. Perry, did you want to address, just briefly speak to the public?
Mayor and Council, I appreciate y'all hearing my resolution and I hope this is something that comes to fruition. It's something I've worked at and I think it'll be a betterment for the city. I think it'll be a big plus for the city as far as housing. As I said in the past meeting, I'll keep you posted on the progress. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Item number seven, Ms. E. Diane Vernon, American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Drive.
I am here to ask for permission to do the poppy drive on two of the corners of the Courthouse Square. I would say four, but why get to four because we get all traffic on two? Because that way, if we get the money, the money that we get...
Excuse me, would you come a little bit closer to the microphone?
Yes, ma'am. Is that better?
Okay. Is that audible to everybody? Okay. You might want to pull it down a little bit. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We do the poppy drive. We take donations for poppies that the veterans of the, the American veterans make themselves and we distribute, we take donations for them. And the money stays, half of the money we collect stays in parish and half goes to state and it stays in the state of Louisiana. And this is for the American veterans and families. And we do this for, like sending girls to girl state versus helping a veteran's family out with a bill or something. Anything that we know of that they need help with, that we can do help versus taking up collections for our troops.
Okay.
We would like consideration.
How is it decided who gets what? The need...
Well, we split it down to, if we, it just, I guess you say, it's a committee of the American Legion Auxiliary. And if we're, if we know about it, we try to help everybody.
There are very few things that we do in terms of collecting money on the streets and in the past, the American Legion post has been one of two, I believe, because there is a risk associated with people being on the street. Mr. Lawrence, would you speak to this, to the council, so that they can make a well-informed decision as they prepare to vote on this request?
Sure. I think the one other group may be the firefighters, I think. And I know that in the past, it had been a problem in the sense that there were so many groups that came that wanted permission and I believe that the city narrowed down its authorization to basically these two groups because of the risk. So with that said, I know that this group has historically been able to participate. It is, this body's prerogative. The Mayor and the Board of all the persons, it's your prerogative to decide who may and who may not stand on those corners and make collections. So you have a right to authorize it if you wish.
And we're coming, you know, we're asking and it's no children involved and I'm going to ask the sheriff's auxiliary members, they've helped us one time, they've helped us before and they're the one that stands out in the street. They don't let us. And that's another thing that I wanted to add in there.
Okay, depending on how this council decides...
Yes, ma'am.
...to vote on your request, I also urge you to meet with Chief Black in terms of requirements.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and duly second. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Obie Johnson.
You say there's only two people that's authorized to do these type?
Yes, sir. Quite some time ago, there were a lot of parties asking for permission and I know that the question came up before this body and ultimately, the decision was made to narrow it down to two authorization, historically, to grant it to two organizations. Not that the number was stuck at two, but the point was, I think this body looked at the merits of all the groups that came forward and decided that these two were meritorious. You didn't have children involved and some of the other special risk circumstances.
Yes, I remember the last lady that came before us, so that's why I'm asking you. We gonna keep it at two?
Well, for the time being, that's what your history has been.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Then answer my question.
Are you ready to take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you meet with Chief Black and set up a time?
And I will also get with you for a date to sign the poppy proclamation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Item number eight, Ms. Kay King, Economic Development Update.
Thank you, Mayor Olive, City Council. Always a pleasure to be here. Had a relatively short list and I kept thinking, oh, I need to mention that, I need to mention that, so I'll, but I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. There's always a lot of activities that happen during the month and I try to narrow it down to a few of the things that I think are the most interesting or the most that the public would be interested in hearing about. But I did want to make note of the Chamber of Commerce trip that Mayor Olive and I attended and I know that it was in the newspaper and many people probably saw that and we went down, I think it was a very good trip. We had some private meetings with the governor who assured us that Northeast Louisiana and Morehouse Parish are still on the state's radar. I think that when we start hearing about the budget cuts and things that are going on in Baton Rouge and now with this oil spill, that we might tend to think that people aren't thinking about Northeast Louisiana. And he assured us that we are still on the radar and they are working very hard to bring things here and he was very sincere in that. We also met with Commissioner Strain, with the Department of Agriculture. He gave some very good insight into some types of businesses that we might also be looking at and kind of correlate with our redevelopment plan and noting some of the new businesses that are coming into Northeast Louisiana, like the Sweet Potato Plan and some extra business that we might generate off of those other area industrial developments. We met with Jerry Jones in facility planning and I thought some of the information that he gave was very reassuring that plans were still in the works for improvements to Shemana Hall State Park. I'm sure they don't have any money right now to fund those improvements, but it reassured me that there were still things going on in the planning process because I think our state park and some of the Bayou Bartholomew, as it was determined by our redevelopment plan, will be very important for tourism development that's very economic development-oriented in that bringing people into our parish from outside and bringing that money into the parish because that's the main thing that our organization works with, it works with companies that are gonna bring in new dollars into the community because we can't just recirculate the dollars. Those things kind of will eventually make their way out and we have to continue to bring in those new dollars into the community. And in talking about the redevelopment plan, well, does anyone have any questions about the meeting in Baton Rouge before I move on to the next item? In keeping that momentum, as Mayor Olive referenced, the redevelopment plan, we do need to keep interest in that. We do need to keep motivated and keep groups involved. There's a lot of groups involved other than Morehouse Economic Development and we're gonna have to work at keeping the goals and to keep making progress in this. I did speak with Kelsey Short today and he's very interested in coming back. He'll be scheduling a meeting and he wants to come back and talk with us about how we're gonna, you know, keep the momentum going on that project. In doing that, we did just complete the biomass study that was in the newspaper yesterday. I think they gave a very good account of the report that was put together by LSU Cornelius De Hoop. I have a problem saying his name, but he was very knowledgeable. I think he put us together a good report, something that we can use in conjunction with the redevelopment plan. Now for things that are a little more exciting, so that people don't doze off, I want to tell you a little bit about Tractor Supply Company because I was very encouraged. The new manager, Robert Hebron, attended our May 5th Board of Directors meeting. He was at the Labor Office and they have been hiring. They will have 12 permanent employees at the store. There will be more and I'm sure there will be more at different times, but they will have 12 permanent employees. And he was very encouraging. He wants to be, he wants to take an active part in the community. He has a lot of activities planned at the store, like antique tractor shows and some things that I believe will continue to bring people into the community. And we do have an opportunity with Tractor Supply to expand our regional sales. And I know that we are already doing a pretty good job, the retail that we have here, and once again, this is talking about bringing in dollars from outside the community, but I talk with people in parking lots sometimes and I saw an automobile last week with Arkansas Weisand Plate and this couple drive from Monticello to shop in our Walmart because they like our Walmart. And I think that as we get additional stores here, we have more opportunities, we're gonna continue to be a regional drawing power and that helps with our sales tax collections and helps us, helps the city and the parish with some of the gaps that IP left with, as far as tax base. And I think that we're doing very well with that as last month, Mr. Ron Carter reported, I think that even though we're down, we're still doing better than many parishes. Making, well, okay, let me tell you, I got my note here. Tractor Supply Company will be opening the end of June and I believe what I've been told, that the Morehouse Activity Center will be opening sometime in August or they will be completed with that. So I'm looking for a very, a very good summer. We can see, we can see construction underway.
There's always a lot of activities that happen during the month, and I try to narrow it down to a few of the things that I think are the most interesting or the most that the public would be interested in hearing about. But I did want to make note of the Chamber of Commerce trip that Mayor Olive and I attended, and I know that it was in the newspaper, many people probably saw that, and we went down, I think it was a very good trip, we had some private meetings with the governor who assured us that Northeast Louisiana and Morehouse Parish are still on the state's radar. I think that when we start hearing about the budget cuts and things that are going on in Baton Rouge, and now with this oil spill, that we might tend to think that people aren't thinking about Northeast Louisiana, and he assured us that we are still on the radar, and they are working very hard to bring things here, and he was very sincere in that. We also met with Commissioner Strain, with the Department of Agriculture, he gave some very good insight into some types of businesses that we might also be looking at and kind of correlate with our redevelopment plan, and noting some of the new businesses that are coming into Northeast Louisiana, like the Sweet Potato Plan and some extra business that we might generate off of those other area industrial developments. We met with Jerry Jones in facility planning, and I thought some of the information that he gave was very reassuring, that plans were still in the works for improvements to Shemana Hall State Park, I'm sure they don't have any money right now to fund those improvements, but it reassured me that there were still things going on in the planning process, because I think our state park and some of the Bayou Bartholomew, as it was determined by our redevelopment plan, will be very important for tourism development that's very economic development-oriented, in that bringing people into our parish from outside and bringing that money into the parish, because that's the main thing that our organization works with, it works with companies that are going to bring in new dollars into the community, because we can't just recirculate the dollars, those things kind of will eventually make their way out, and we have to continue to bring in those new dollars into the community. And in talking about the redevelopment plan, well, does anyone have any questions about the meeting in Baton Rouge before I move on to the next item? In keeping that momentum, as Mayor Olive referenced, the redevelopment plan, we do need to keep interest in that, we do need to keep motivated and keep groups involved. There's a lot of groups involved, other than Morehouse Economic Development, and we're going to have to work at keeping the goals and to keep making progress in this. I did speak with Kelsey Short today, and he's very interested in coming back, he'll be scheduling a meeting, and he wants to come back and talk with us about how we're gonna, you know, keep the momentum going on that project. In doing that, we did just complete the biomass study that was in the newspaper yesterday, I think, they gave a very good account of the report that was put together by LSU Cornelius De Hoop, I have a problem saying his name, but he was very knowledgeable, I think he put us together a good report, something that we can use in conjunction with the redevelopment plan. Now for things that are a little more exciting, so that people don't doze off, I want to tell you a little bit about Tractor Supply Company, because I was very encouraged, the new manager, Robert Hebron, attended our May 5th Board of Directors meeting, he was at the Labor Office, and they have been hiring, they will have 12 permanent employees at the store, there will be more, and I'm sure there will be more at different times, but they will have 12 permanent employees. And he was very encouraging, he wants to be, he wants to take an active part in the community, he has a lot of activities planned at the store, like antique tractor shows and some things that I believe will continue to bring people into the community, and we do have an opportunity with Tractor Supply to expand our regional sales. And I know that we are already doing a pretty good job, the retail that we have here, and once again, this is talking about bringing in dollars from outside the community, but I talk with people in parking lots sometimes, and I saw an automobile last week with Arkansas Weisen plate, and this couple drive from Monticello to shop in our Walmart, because they like our Walmart. And I think that as we get additional stores here, we have more opportunities, we're going to continue to be a regional drawing power, and that helps with our sales tax collections and helps the city and the parish with some of the gaps that IP left with as far as tax base, and I think that we're doing very well with that, as last month, Mr. Ron Carter reported, I think that even though we're down, we're still doing better than many parishes. Make it, well, okay, let me tell you, I got my note here, Tractor Supply Company will be opening the end of June, and I believe, what I've been told, that the Morehouse Activity Center will be opening sometime in August, or they will be completed with that, so I'm looking for a very, a very good summer. We can see, we can see construction underway, Bastrop, Toyota of Bastrop, and then we see citizens like Mr. Perry continuing to make investment in the city, I think these are all very positive signs. I'm also working with a couple of area businesses that I have not previously worked with that have plans to expand, so I'll be bringing some additional information about that within the next couple of months. Making Rich Foods, I want to give you a little report on that, I have been working with the two young men, Mr. Irwin and Mr. Riley, this week, and so I've been, I've been out there, and they will be doing some type of promotion coming up within the next few weeks. They are scheduled to have their product in the grocery stores, starting distribution in a couple of weeks. So as with any new business, there's always a few things that are not expected, but I think that we're about to really get that business off the ground, or they are, and we're doing everything in our organization to support them that we can, and I know that the city has been very supportive of different items with, you know, trying to make sure things that are within the law, that we have met the needs of that being a startup business and treating it as a business incubator in the building. I do wish them success, I have heard people in Northeast Louisiana talking about this, because they did win the Bulldog Business Plan Competition at Louisiana Tech, and when I attended the North Louisiana Economic Partnership Annual Meeting, there were people talking about this new business, and so I think that a lot of people are going to be watching the success, and they're going to be watching how Morehouse Parish and Bastrop supports young businesses. I would like to also add that in that meeting, that the City of Bastrop was recognized by the speaker, because he had been on the city council's, or he had been on the city's website and watched city council meetings, and he talked about the importance of visibility on the web and how essential that is to attracting new business, to have that web presence, and he was using Bastrop as an example of a community that was doing this, and I compliment the city on the progress that I believe has been made in continuing to promote Bastrop as a technology friendly and taking advantage of new technology, and I applaud you on that. It was pretty nice to be recognized, and there was a pretty good crowd there.
Do you have any questions for Ms. King? Thank you, Ms. King, it's a pleasure working with you, she worked with us on the redevelopment plan, that took almost a year, a lot of steering committee meetings, and coming together to see what's important in this community, and I want to publicly express my appreciation for your work with that. And Ms. King also has worked with us on several grant projects that we have submitted, and we are waiting for a response, and so much of the work we do is so methodical, and sometimes I know it gives a mundane appearance to the ordinary citizen, but we have to take it step by step, and in the process, calm the public passion about what's going on, and let you know that we are working behind the scenes. So much of what we do is sensitive, we can't tell the public because it compromises the integrity, but we are working, and I appreciate working with you, Ms. King.
Well, the same, and I believe that, I really believe things are going along very well, and I'm tremendously optimistic about the future of Bastrop.
Thank you.
And Morehouse Parish. Thanks.
Item number nine, discussion action on public works bids. Ms. Goma.
Mayor, Council, we, this is an item that we did every year, it's to go out for bids for certain public works materials, just in case we have a big project, Jay, we try to get good prices to help us in getting our supplies. I'll go ahead and read them out, and we'll have to take a vote, we can do it all at one time. Base course aggregate, we have one bidder, Johnson Company LLC, they bid at fourteen seventy-five per ton. Surface course aggregate, Johnson Company LLC, bid it on for fourteen seventy-five a ton.
Number two, wash gravel, Johnson Company LLC, they bided twenty dollars and fifty cents per ton. Ready mix concrete, Century Ready Mix, four sack mix, one oh nine, five sack mix, one oh five, and six sack mix is one oh one. Concrete cupboards, Ricker Materials, bid on that, they were the sole bidder also. Coated metal cupboards, contact construction products was the sole bidder, and asphalt mix, the bidder was Drer Contracting, they bided eighty-nine dollars per ton. I recommend that y'all accept the bid.
Have you heard the information provided by Ms. Goma? What is your pleasure on this request? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a move that we accept this bid.
Second. And second, are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Goma. Item number 10, discussion action on surveillance equipment for police department, Chief Black.
Good evening, this is a 2005 technology grant, and this is just about to wrap up that grant, is for some low light surveillance equipment, and we advertised for bids, and the low bid was from Tech Stan Incorporated for thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, and I recommend that we accept this bid.
Did you say it was a grant?
Yes, sir. It's a 2005 technology grant, and I think this probably will finish up that particular
Mr. Lawrence, do you need to speak to this?
Well, I had a conversation with the chief, and I think it's one of those grants where if you don't spend it, you lose it. And it's part of a multi-year, I guess it's been funding some other things as well, so... Yes, sir, we've purchased some other things, I think... Related to security? Well, there may be one other thing left, fiber optic, optical equipment, that we can just get quotes on, it wouldn't require to be bid out. But we have purchased some radios and some other equipment with it so far, and some purchases were made before I took office also, so this is getting close to finishing up this grant. Well, I think it's suffice it to say it's badly needed, the equipment is useful, and if you don't buy it, you lose money, so that's basically where we are.
You've heard the presentation by Chief Black, and the recommendation made by our attorney, use it or lose it, what is your pleasure?
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Black. Item number 11, permission to advertise for bids for street program.
Mayor, this is a procedure that we go by to request, the council has to give us permission to advertise for bids to do some street repairs, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you have any questions for Mr. McKee?
I have one, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Designate area you will be starting from.
Yes, sir, if you like, I'd be happy to name the streets that we have.
Okay, does that question deviate from what you were talking about, Mr. McKee? Permission to advertise for bids for street program? Do we have clarity on what Mr. McKee is talking about first? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. McKee.
Okay, tentatively the streets are Cypress, Forest, Highland, Pearl, MLK South, and Hoover. Approximately four miles of street.
Are there any other questions?
And of course, once we advertise for bids, it comes back to the council for approval.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Mr. McKee, if you will remain at the podium, discussion on animal and foul
Mayor, we've had a lot of call about animals, nuisance, presenting a nuisance in the neighborhoods, and we did some research on our ordinance, and the biggest complaints were animals weren't pinned up, areas weren't kept clean, and they were trespassing on their neighbor's property, and causing insect and unsanitary odor. And we wanted the council to give us some direction on which way you wanted us to go on this. I have a suggestion, I suggest, and of course, I'm not the attorney, Mr. Lawrence is, but I suggest we enforce the ordinance we have.
I concur. For the time being, I concur, that's what we start off.
And just for an example, all animals should be pinned, kept clean, waste removed from the pins, and the animals should be placed in an area that's also protects them from the weather.
So you wrecked a shed, in other words.
And for an example, let's say I had a horse, and I didn't have a pin for him, and I just put a rope on him and let him kind of just roam around, and maybe the rope is long enough to extend on my neighbor's property, well, now you're in violation of city ordinance. I'm in violation of city ordinance, because first of all, he isn't pinned, and next of all, he's trespassing on my neighbor's property. Any questions?
I so appreciate, some years ago, as a council member, Mr. Lawrence would always tell us to use the ordinance that we had on the books first, and this is certainly applicable in this situation, Mr. McKee researched the ordinance, we've talked, you had some dialogue as council members in the finance committee, we bounced it off of our attorney, and I think this is one of those instances where we can use what we have creatively to address so many of the requests we get in reference to horses and dogs and...
Chickens.
Chickens and...
Coats.
Goats. I don't want to miss any animal in the roll call here, but at this time, I think this requires no action, right, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, ma'am, that's right, and if I could, Mayor, if I could add one other thing, I think the recommendation, one recommendation too, that I know that the Board of All Persons, as well as yourself, and Mr. Lockett spoke to this, deals with publicizing the actual ordinances that Mr. McKee just mentioned, and so with your authorization and with the acquiescence of the Board of All the Persons, that's what we will do, make known what these ordinances are, so that people will be directly aware of when they are in violation.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. McKee, if you'll take care of the proper protocol in terms of making sure it's publicly known in all the mediums that we exercise. At this time, I will entertain a motion to expand this agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Armstrong?
Second.
And second by Mr. Nation and Mr. Locke. All in favor? Any opposed? We need to talk about the closure of the Donaldson Street Bridge. This is a state of emergency, Mr. McKee, if you'll come back, we've had some communication with our engineer.
Mayor, while Mr. McKee is coming, may I speak to this issue?
Certainly, please.
Of course, Mayor Olive mentioned this to me, along with the city clerk and Mr. McKee earlier, and as I understand it, we've just expanded the agenda to add this item to it for your consideration, and my understanding is, we want to consider this on an emergency basis, which means that the regular steps that you would go through, public bid process, et cetera, those things would be suspended, and the law does permit you to do that when there is an emergency. Now, in this particular instance, when you have a bridge out, even though there may be alternate routes or whatever else, you have to take into account that fire protection may be compromised, police protection may be compromised, safety to pedestrians and/or motor vehicles, even though they're not using it, that may be compromised, so that may constitute a basis, and you have the right to say that that is an emergency that makes it necessary to deem this action an emergency. So we're going to ask you to actually take two votes, if you so see it to take this matter up. First, to declare that there are emergency circumstances that are in place that necessitate the suspension of the normal rules and taking advantage of the state law that allows you to expedite letting this out for, I guess, I'm not going to say forbid, but for repair, whatever route you take. And then secondly, will be to actually authorize the city to proceed with making the repairs. So just keep that in mind, that sequence, declaring this an emergency, if you so deem it to be, and then the second step, authorizing the work to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. McKee, if you will talk a little bit about why, and then I believe the council will be better prepared to address those two motions that Mr. Lawrence has went in detail about.
Okay, Mayor, briefly, we are doing our annual bridge inspections to see what repairs, if any, we need to make, and we recognized immediately at Donaldson Street Bridge this morning, that it was engraved need repair, and it created a hazard for the public. We went ahead and closed the bridge, so we didn't have any more traffic coming across it, and we need to repair, we've also notified all of the agencies involved that may provide emergency service and the police jury, of course, and everyone involved. We will also try to see if we can get something on the cable channel to let them know, to let the citizens know that the bridge is closed, there are alternate routes, you'll have to go about a block and a half to two blocks out of the way, but you can still, there will be an alternate route.
At this time, I will entertain a motion in reference to declaring the bridge on Donaldson Street as an emergency. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, Mayor.
Aye, second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? I will entertain a motion at this time to authorize the City of Bastrop to, to make necessary repairs on the bridge on Donaldson Street.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McKee. We covered everything, Ms. Goma?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.